Good afternoon, everyone. It is 6:00 PM and I am Mayor Yumika Robinson and I'm calling this meeting to order. This is October 8th, 2024 for our regular city council meeting. I will go ahead and ask everyone to please silent or turn your phones off at this moment. Thank you. I pledge to build a stronger and more prosperous community by advocating for civil engagement, respecting others and their viewpoints, and finding solutions for the betterment of my, our city of Lake City, South Carolina. Invocation will be led by Councilwoman Scott and the pledge will be led by Mayor Pro Tem Singletary. Please stand if you may. And as we go into the invocation, I do ask everyone to please keep all the victims and everyone affected by Hurricane Helene and also Hurricane Milton that is approaching Florida and all the bereaved families in our communities, including mine. I recently just lost my aunt, my father's sister. Please do keep us in prayer.
Let us pray. Dear God, we thank you, dear God, for your grace and your mercy. We thank you, dear God, for letting us be able to come together to see about the business of this city. We pray to heaven and father, you give us an open mind, open heart. We all will be on one accord. We pray to heaven and father, you continue to bless this community, bless Lake City, bless the area all around us. Bless Lord, the one that is in the stone of life, the stone of the weather. Lord, this is a season, this is a season, Lord, that we grieving so many diction, so many things that happen around the world. Bless us, Lord, in the mighty name of Jesus, we pray. Bless our council member here this evening. Bless all our city officials. We pray to heaven and father, you would give us grace, Lord, your grace and your mercy to keep us going throughout this, um, this, I've been rehearsing, this, uh, this.
Meeting.
Meeting this evening.
Amen.
Bless us in your name, we pray. Amen.
Amen, amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Councilwoman Scott. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Singletary. Madam Clerk, can you please poll the council members?
Mayor Yumika Robinson.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Nicole Singletary.
Present.
Councilmember Lammy Scott.
Present.
Councilmember William Askins.
Present.
Councilmember Delana Cooper.
Present.
Councilmember Sandra Fung.
Present.
And Councilmember Jason Brett.
Present.
Mayor Robinson, I'm going to be a floor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Can I get a motion to adopt the agenda as printed?
Move to adopt.
Second.
It has been properly moved and second. Any questions, counsel? If none, all in favor, show of hands. Thank you. Now I need a motion to approve the minutes. Approval of minutes from the mayor and council meeting September 10th, 2024. So move. Who's second?
Scott.
It has been properly moved and second. Any questions about the minutes?
Yes, um, I asked this question before, um, about the minutes being dictated verbatim and Marsha answered with a response that the municipal association, I don't remember what it was she said.
Frowned upon.
Huh?
Frowned upon verbatim minutes.
You know why?
Because anything can be taken out of context. Minutes are a recording of actions taken by council.
Exactly.
That are approved by council, any actions that are taken. Anything discussions is not action that's taken as long as it's within the motion.
Okay, well, with that being the case, I'd like to get a recorded copy of the minutes.
Yes, we'll send you, we transfer file.
Okay, you said one before, but I didn't, I received something that looked like the Morris Code.
Well, if you click on that link, it'll actually bring you to the retransferring. You have to create an account and then once you create that account, it will actually go through the whole recording for you. You can sit there and play back and forward, however. I can show you that if you would like me to.
Please, and if you will, that ordinance or whatever from the municipal association that they frowned on this, I would like a copy of that also.
That's not an ordinance, it's just, it's just a, it's a municipal, I believe it's in the municipal association handbook, but I will get you that.
Please do, thank you, appreciate it.
Any other questions, counsel? If none, all in favor, show of hands. We have no presentations from our youth tonight, so we're going to move forward with our other presentations. We have several presentations tonight. First, we have a proclamation presented by Mayor Robinson on National Cities, Towns, and Villages. We have Ms. Harriet Rose for Domestic Violence Awareness Month. We have Ms. Michelle Daniels for Breast Cancer Awareness Month. We have Ms. Paula Morris, Ronald E. McNair, 5K Walk and Run. And we have Ms. Paula Morris again for a community, along with community presentation, and Ms. Donna Burrows for Lake City Black Chamber of Commerce.
Would you like to read this proclamation tonight? No?
So the first, first presentation we have is National Cities, Towns, and Villages Month. Whereas the National League of Cities was founded in 1924 in Lawrence, Kansas, as an American Municipal Association by state municipal leagues, seeking more coordination and national representation as cities, towns, and villages expanded rapidly. Whereas the Nonpartisan National League of Cities is the oldest and largest organization representing municipal governments throughout the United States, representing the interests of more than 19,000 cities, towns, and villages across the country. Whereas today, the National City League of Cities works in partnership with 49 state municipal leagues across the country to strengthen local leadership, drive innovation, and influence the federal policies that impact local programs and operations. Whereas the Voice of Cities, Towns, and Villages in Washington, DC, the National League of Cities, has successfully championed federal legislative solutions that support municipalities and has worked closely with Congress and the executive branch to educate policymakers on the realities of local implementation. Whereas the city of Lake City is a proud member of the National League of Cities and has benefited from the organization's research, technical expertise, federal advocacy, and opportunities to learn from other local governments. Whereas local governments are the bedrock of American democracy, providing 336 million residents with the most accountable, responsive, inclusive, ethical, and transparent government in the world. Whereas from the nation's smallest villages to its largest cities, America's local governments have been essential in transforming the United States of America into the greatest, most influential nation in world history. Whereas the city of Lake City was first incorporated in 1883 and is proudly served today by mayor and council and a city workforce of 149 dedicated public servants and volunteers. Now therefore be it resolved that the city of Lake City hereby proclaims, and this is for May 2024, as National Cities, Towns, and Villages Month in celebration of America's local governments and the National League of Cities' historic centennial anniversary, signed by yours truly, the Honorable Mayor Yumika Robinson. And we are proclaiming this tonight due to the fact that we were chosen to be part of the centennial roadshow for National League of Cities. We are one of the 100 cities in the entire nation that was chosen to be part of this roadshow and you will get more information upcoming on that. Right now in the state of South Carolina, I think we are the third from Columbia and Casey. Lake City is the third place to be chosen, so we are very honored for that. Thank you. Next, we will have Ms. Harriet Rose.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Harriet Rose and I am the trauma advocate of PD Coalition against domestic and sexual assault. We are a nonprofit volunteer organization dedicated to the reduction of sexual assault, family violence, child abuse, and to the needs of all victims. Annually, October is considered Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Today, I would like to provide some facts about DV and some of the free services that the Coalition provides to support victims and hold offenders responsible for their actions. A woman is assaulted or beaten every nine seconds. One in three women and one in four men have been in abusive relationships. And one in five women and one in seven men have faced severe physical violence. Twenty people are abused by intimate partner every minute, adding up to 10 million each year. More than 200,000 phone calls are placed to domestic violence hotlines every year. The presence of guns in a home where domestic violence is a problem increases the risk of murder by 500%. We have a 24-hour crisis line to help victims of domestic violence and sexual assault. We have emergency shelter where they can house for up to 30 days. The Coalition has a transitional shelter where a victim can stay up to a year. We offer trauma, court, and hospital advocacy, as well as services for children that have been sexually or physically abused and are witness of domestic violence. Lastly, we provide offender programs that provide evidence-based services for offenders to help them take responsibility for their abusive behavior. October is the month for domestic violence. One of the things that I really want to stress is about the guns. It is a lot of issues with domestic violence where guns are present. Also, before a gun is used, um, we have found out through statistics that strangulation is a red flag. That's when you know the person wants you to die. So we ask and we try to educate the community and women and men that that's the time when you need to be calling either the hotline or you need to be leaving the home because it will result in something that you don't want to result in.
Thank you, Ms. Rose. Ms. Michelle Daniels for Breast Cancer Awareness.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Mayor Robinson, council members, and the residents of Lake City, South Carolina. In March 1997, my mother, the late Winky Daniels, was diagnosed with the advanced stages of breast cancer. My mother wanted to let people know that you don't have to walk this journey alone. And on September the 11th, 1999, the Winkies Task Force Cancer Support Group was formed. The first cancer support group was formed here in Lake City, South Carolina. In our cancer support group, we have numerous members who are breast cancer survivors and some who are over 30-plus years, and one is Ms. Claritha Burgess, and we give her honor on tonight. On October 11th of 1990, a proclamation 6202 was signed by the late President George Bush as National Breast Cancer Awareness Month. In 2024, approximately 310 and 720 new cases of invasive breast cancer and 56,500 cases, which is known as DCIS, which means Dental Cholera Institute, will be diagnosed among US women, and 42,250 women will die from breast cancer. The majority of invasive breast cancer is 84% and the death is 91%. Occurs among women ages 50 years and older. With about one half is 52% and all the deaths of women is ages 70 years and older. We often heard that their early detection is the best protection and it sounds redundant, but it's so true. The American Cancer Society has already estimated this year for 2024 about 2,790 new cases of invasive breast cancer will diagnose and about 530 men will die from this cancer, of breast cancer. The Winkies Task Force, we are a group of people that we serve this community and we have served it not only on the local level, but we have served it on the state and the national level. We support the St. Jude Research. We support the American Cancer Society, and we also support our local residents here in Lake City. But I want to go a little further tonight, just to ask you, not just to recognize this as Breast Cancer Awareness Month, but this is also liver and bowel awareness. The National Cancer Institute, that 41,630 new cases of liver and bowel will occur in the United States. And approximately 29,840 people are expected to die from this liver and bowel cancer. These numbers has increased by 420 from the year of 2023. Therefore, I ask that mayor and council, that when you sign a proclamation, we ask that you not only sign a proclamation for Breast Cancer Awareness Month, just don't put the pink, we ask and we challenge you to use the ribbon green to recognize that liver and cancer awareness matters too. I'd like to thank you for your time. These are a few members of our group who could be with us tonight. This is our chaplain, evangelist, Dr. Delphine Graham. We have our public relations, deacon William Graham, and no other than the advisor, our bishop, Dr. Linwood Cooper. Again, we thank you, we challenge you. We would like to see not just pink, but green as well. Thank you.
Thanks.
And on October 26th, 2024, at 112 D River Street, there will be a cancer awareness gala, and this is hosted by Annette and Beverly Presing, the Pink Eyes Edition. And the guest speakers is, of course, Alisa Robinson from Manning, South Carolina, Melvin Smith from Olano, South Carolina, and yours truly, myself. Again, we look forward to seeing you, we'll leave flyers, and again, we challenge you. Thank you.
Thank you. So we have Ms. Paula Morris.
Good evening, mayor and council persons. First, I want to talk to you about Dr. Ronald E. McNair. The Dr. Ronald E. McNair 5K run walk that's held every year at this time because October is his birth month, and we have great things planned for the citizens of Lake City, from the surrounding area, all across this country, if they will come. It will be happening at Dr. Ronald E. McNair Memorial Park. We start at 7:00 AM to 7:45 AM will be onsite registration. But you can omit that if you go ahead and register early. Okay, and at 8 o'clock AM to 10:00 AM, we will have the, the race start to finish time. At 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM, we will have the STEM activities. And if you want to register for the run-walk race, you can go to ITS, that's I-T-S, yourrace.com, and you can go ahead and pre-register for this event. We also will be having free health screenings, blood pressure, diabetes, cholesterol, hearing, sickle cell, breast cancer awareness, information, flu vaccines possible, chiropractor will be there, STEM activities, mobile bus, and we're going to have drones, drones and rockets. We have a lot of this geared to our young people in this area. We find out, um, last week that we have competition because South Carolina State College is having their youth day. So we have about over 100 and some youth that's going to that, and we know that they can't attend both. But we still looking for a great time on that Saturday. And this year, we are excited to have is our walk ambassador, Reverend James East Singletary, who is a Lake Cityan. He is, he is the son of Ethel Singletary and his father, who is deceased, James Fulmer. He is the director of Student Affairs Office of Practum. He's a learning and a lecturer at Columbia University School of Social Work. He's the pastor for the Family Life Ministry at St. Paul Community Baptist Church in Brooklyn, New York. So we are excited to have Mr. James to come and be our speaker. So if you don't have anything planned for that day, but if you do have something planned, if you can scratch it off your calendar, please do so. And come and have a joyful time with us there to celebrate our hero, Dr. Ronald E. McNair. I've already given out some flyers, but if somebody else wants some flyers, then you're welcome. Okay? Any questions? Okay. We all have one of the members standing with me today from, with Unity. Some of the churches in this area, we have visited here, and some of you know what we are about, but Unity, it consists of 14 members. We are diverse group, black, white, Hispanics. We are diverse in denomination, we're Catholic, Baptist, Holiness, non-denomination. We have superintendent, pastors, teachers. The group is just diverse. And what we want to do in Lake City, what we have been working towards for the past four years is to bring unity into the city. We are a divided group of people sometimes, and so that's what we're about to bring unity in the city. Unity, when we are together, when we are strong together, we can make things happen. When we connect together, we can make things happen. I like to use this example. When these fingers are spread out and I can hit on her, they're not going to bring much power. But once I have all my fists up, get something, get these fingers together, I can do a lot with these fingers together. Lake City, we can do a lot if we come together. That means all ethnic group. That means no matter what the denomination is, no matter what your social background is, that's what Unity is about. And so, and also that I want to lead into this right here. I've already introduced this, oh, this is Cassandra Bennett, y'all. Please let the citizen of Lake City, tonight to the mayor and city council, I want to say to you, I may not be speaking for all the citizens, but some. Let us understand why at this time you want to change the ordinance back to part-time mayor. Some of you were on this council when you saw a need for a full-time mayor, and so you changed the ordinance. What's the problem now? Is it the budget? If so, are you going to cut your salary? Is it because Mayor Robinson is not fulfilling her duties as a full-time mayor? Or is it because of your opinion, dislike of the mayor, or making decision? Or are you making decision on how you feel about her? I think the citizens need an answer and proof. Mayor Robinson is moving our city forward with the help of this council and her staff. She is the most visible mayor we can ever have. She doesn't do for one ethnic group, but for all. She attended churches in our community. She keeps up, keep, um, keep us update what's going on in the community. Even with the storm, she's keeping us update with, through the media, let us know what's going on. When streets are being closed, she'll put it on the media, on Facebook, and let you know that these streets are closed, so you won't have to go down those street. She is connected with Florence District Number Three Schools here. She love our children. She goes to these schools. She, she, she volunteers in everything. I have know, I know and I understand that some of the projects that have been fulfilled since she become mayor was already in a phase one or phase two or whatever. But she came and made sure, along with the council, along with the staff, to make sure that these visions didn't die, that these dreams didn't die, and they are being filled. I can't understand now that this mayor and the council, I can't understand now how, now, how this mayor and the council are moving forward. You, I'm sorry, I can't understand now that this mayor and the council are moving forward. You want to go, but now you want to go back to an ordinance that you thought at one time would be good for the mayor at that time. Let's not us go back. Let's not be like. Let's not be like the Israelites. Want to go back to Egypt, want to go back into bondage. If we are coming out of bondage, come on, let's come out of it together. It's time for us to work together in this city. I get emotional about these things when I see the division. Yes, and I'm going to say it, we will talk about the whites, how the whites are keeping us back. When we as blacks, we're keeping our own self back. Because when we come against one another, we are keeping ourselves back. So we need to get it together. If you don't like me, that's fine. If you don't like my ways, that's fine, but don't try to hurt me in the midst of it. Psalm six, nine through ten says, "The Lord has heard my cry for mercy. The Lord accept my prayers. All my enemies will be overwhelmed with the shame and anguish. They will turn back and suddenly be put to shame." Genesis fifty and twenty, if you know anything about Joseph. And when Joseph brothers recognized who he was, he said, "You didn't sent me this way. God sent me this way for such a time as just." Luke six and thirty-one said, "Do unto others as you would like them to do to you." In other words, treat all like you want to be treated. And more than that, treat all as God has treated you. What we make happen for others, God will make happen for you, whether it's good or bad. So I say to you tonight, if you pass this ordinance, then our mayor is going to have to find a job because she going to need a job to work. So how can we reach the mayor if she's on an eight-to-five? You change it for the other mayor so that he could be here full-time? So please tell the citizen why you want to change it back. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Paula. Thank you, Paula Morris. Next, we have Ms. Donna Burrows.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council.
Good afternoon.
Thank you so much for having us. I'll introduce Mr. Gilian Fryson, but I'll let him talk as soon as I get done. My name is Donna Burrows. I'm with the Lake City, the first Lake City Black Chamber of Commerce. I decided to start Lake City Black Chamber of Commerce because I believe in the power of collaboration and economic inclusion. I saw this as an incredible opportunity to leverage my experience and make a meaningful impact. The Lake City Black Chamber of Commerce provides a platform to champion black-owned businesses, address systemic barriers, and promote sustainable economic growth. I wanted to be a part of a change and help create an ecosystem where minority entrepreneurs can not only survive, but can excel in leading their industries. The Lake City Black Chamber of Commerce is a nonprofit that was established with the state of South Carolina in August of twenty twenty-two. Our vision is to become the primary economic source for empowerment for African-Americans in Lake City and surrounding areas. Our mission is to support and promote black-owned businesses and to devise strategies to improve wealth disparities between African-Americans and other ethnicities throughout the greater Lake City and surrounding areas. Lake City Black Chamber of Commerce will specifically work towards expanding economic empowerment in our African-American community. I would also like to say that we now have an office space at the continuum. We are now there, and we're happy to be there. Just quickly, want to say we made an announcement yesterday about something else that we're doing within our chamber. It's called the Young Entrepreneurs in Business Enrichment Program Model. This is a pilot program that works in conjunction with our youth in the community to provide quality training for young entrepreneurs that reside in Lake City and surrounding areas, which are primarily low to moderate income communities. Through our coordinated efforts, we provide entrepreneurial services, including hands-on business projects and life training skills to our youth. The program will begin working with youth between the ages five to eighteen years of age, and the Young Entrepreneurs in Business Model component will train our youth on leadership development, basic business knowledge, and basic financial knowledge. And this will begin on January the first. We will have more information on our website. We'd like to come back and present that to council as well.
Thank you.
I'd like to introduce Mr. Gilian Fryson. He is our advisor and our treasurer for the Lake City Black Chamber of Commerce.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Donna Burrows. Mayor and council, good evening. It's good to be back in my old office. For those of you who don't know, I served five and a half years as the chief municipal judge here. I love what y'all have done with the place. Good to see my former coworkers, Chief Driggs, Chief, now Chief Miles. But we are here, we're very excited about the Lake City Black Chamber of Commerce. I'll address the elephant in the room. Why Black Chamber? That's probably the biggest question. We, all chambers are conveners of business leaders, regardless of what acronym comes before a chamber name. So first and foremost, we are a convenor of business leaders. Doesn't matter what the ethnicity or demographic of the business owner. Our first and primary care, though, is to address those barriers that black business owners have. There, I think April two thousand twenty-four, the Census Bureau released an article about wealth disparities in the United States. And the article starts off talking about white house, white householders versus the assets that black householders have. That report, and they use data from two thousand twenty-one, that data showed that white householders have ten times the wealth of a black household. And if you think about that number, if you think about how much money you may have in your bank account, savings account, in your stocks or whatever, times ten for white householders versus black householders. The amount of wealth that was owned by white householders in two thousand twenty-one was eighty percent of all wealth in the United States. For black householders, four point seven percent. Now, let's go back to eighteen sixty-five. We all know what happened in eighteen sixty-five, right? Civil War was over, slavery was over. Blacks and African-Americans at that time had zero percent of wealth. Why? Because they weren't allowed to own property, because they were considered property. And here we are, two hundred-plus years later, and we've gone from zero percent to only four point seven percent of wealth, okay? This is why a Black Chamber is important. Because black families who face this disparity, who become business owners, will have lots of challenges and barriers. And so we study this data, we take this data, and not to point a finger, but to lend a hand to helping to improve the economy, not just in Lake City, but the greater Florence County area, in any area that we can reach. We have members that aren't just here in Lake City. They're all over South Carolina and beyond, and other states too as well. And so we're excited to do this work. One of the, well, there are three avenues that we are addressing as far as trying to minimize this wealth gap. And so business ownership is one, investing is two. And what Ms. Donna Burrows does every day in her job, she owns Burrows Insurance. We're talking about life insurance too as well. The way that white families and black families prepare for life after death, very different, very different. And so these are things that we're addressing from the Black Chamber to assist black business owners with those challenges and barriers. And again, as we say, all chambers are conveners of business leaders, and our just, our primary focus is black business owners. Questions, comments, concerns, prayer requests.
Thank you, I appreciate you both. Thank you so much for the information, and I look forward to hearing more. That was our last presentation for this evening. Next, we're going to have public comment period. Comments are limited to two minutes per person, and no personal or verbal attacks will be entertained. The council is interested in hearing your concerns, but speakers should not expect council action or deliberation on subject matters brought up during the public comment period. Topics requiring further investigation will be referred to the city administration and may be scheduled for a future agenda. Please make sure to sign in and leave your name and address for the record with the city clerk to council.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I am Betty Francis Stone. I'm a retired teacher from Florence District Three. I am currently a business owner in Lake City and own property downtown. And most importantly, I was born and raised in Lake City. I love our town, and that is why I'm here tonight, because I'm very concerned that the council is considering making our mayor's position part-time. I will make several points that outline my concerns. First, we, the citizens of Lake City, did not elect a part-time mayor. We elected a full-time mayor. Mayor Robinson is solely focused on the needs of the community, our community. Second, now is not the time to be considering a part-time mayor as she has already made an incredible difference in the city. We need our mayor to be full-time so she will oversee the recent and ongoing projects like the thirteen and a half million-dollar EDA grant. Third, Mayor Robinson has been recognized for her talents, and she has been selected to numerous state and national committees and boards. To name but two, the South Carolina Mayors Association Board of Directors and the National League of Cities Council on Youth Education and Families. I want to close by saying, I do not believe making the mayor's position part-time is in the best interest of our city. Small towns across this state are dying. If our town is to survive and prosper, we need full-time leadership focused on the job. It is important to the future of Lake City to keep Mayor Robinson a full-time mayor. Council members, I implore you not to vote for making our mayor part-time. As Paula Morris said, and I'm going to reiterate, we do not need to go backward. Let's move forward with the full-time leadership for Lake City. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mayor and Council members. My name is Jane Pleyer, and I'm a lifelong resident of Lake City. My family has been a resident of Lake City for over a hundred years. I've served the community of Lake City as a pharmacist for over forty years. When I voted for Mayor Robinson two years ago, I voted for a full-time mayor. Lake City needs a full-time mayor, as Ms. Stone has highlighted. I do not understand how the council can decide to put her position down from a full-time to a part-time without definitive reasons to the citizens of Lake City as to why she is wasting our taxpayer dollars. Lake City needs a city council that is working with our mayor and is not so divisive. Putting her down to part-time now is not the time when Lake City is finally getting its infrastructure into place. Just now, this thirteen-point million-dollar grant for the Ackland Storm Drainage Project is a project that Lake City has needed all my life, and she's working on another project on the Independent Stormwater Drainage Project. Not even to mention getting the town ready for art fields, which is the lifeblood for our merchants. If any of you read the News and Courier, you will see there are articles almost every week about the PD dying and highlighting cities that will be ghost towns in a year or more. Marion, Dillon, which are county seats. Lake City has never been mentioned. Why? Because we're not on the list. We are improving our infrastructure so that we can grow, and that businesses will come here, and we have a continuum to train that force. No other town in the PD can make that claim, and it takes a full-time mayor to move us forward on these projects. If Lake City goes to a part-time mayor, you're looking at a retired person. Because a younger person cannot possibly live off of twenty-seven thousand dollars. A retired person will not have the vigor, energy, enthusiasm to do the job. Do you really want to go backwards? In closing, Jesus had a situation in John eight, seven, with a woman accused of something, and he asked that anyone who was without sin cast a first stone. I'm going to flip that around a bit and ask if there is anyone in this building who thinks they can do a better job than Mayor Robin, cast this stone. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Jessica Wilson, and I have some concern as far as our first responders. I had an incident the other morning, and I received two officers. Six in the morning, I was locked out of my house, and fire marshal came to call. But I asked them, no, the school district transportation called and asked for a police officer to be at the bus stop because we have a sex predator and, you know, people and drugs in the area, and my kids have to go on a back road where there's no light. Well, I asked the officer that was at my house, and his response was, "We have other things to do. We have other properties to parole than to sit at a bus stop to make sure these kids get on the bus." So I want to know, are y'all lacking police officers? Do y'all need more police officers? Or are they just here to parole the buildings and not serve us? That's my concern, because I have kids. And I don't need them, I don't need to be paying taxes for someone looking at a building and not kids. But that's it.
What's your name again?
Jessica Wilson.
Wilson, okay. Thank you.
Good evening, Karen Williams-Corcey. And I didn't prepare anything because I wasn't sure I was going to say anything, but then I looked at this piece of paper here, and it said you guys were concerned about my concerns, and I just kind of believed what I read. So I just want to say very quickly, very briefly, that I do not think the mayor should be part-time because we did not elect a part-time mayor. And I want to ask council to please keep in mind the citizens. It ain't about y'all, it's about what we want.
Thank you.
Good evening. The last time I addressed the chief about a vicious rumor, I think he misunderstood what I was saying. It wasn't that you didn't answer the phone. It said that you would not come out irrespective of what the incident was. That mean leave your house, report to the scene of the crime. That was the vicious rumor that was going around. I want to thank lawyer Wilson for saying that I did not disperse him, and he didn't think about what I was saying, and he revered me that he should do what I said. Now to address the elephant in the room. I do not think that we should have a full-time mayor, and I'll tell you why. The mayor was a city councilperson when they voted to come back, and I sat in this chair, as everybody know I normally do, and said they would come back in two years and address this issue. It was an ordinance passed that night. You did not vote for a full-time mayor. Regardless of what you say, because Matty Thomas sitting in the seat, and they said they were back in two years. Mayor was sitting right there as well in that seat where Cole was sitting at when this was addressed, okay? Now, the population of Lake City in twenty twenty was six thousand four hundred seventy-eight. Twenty-ten, sixty-six seventy-five. Nine is fifty-nine zero-three. Certain people stood up here and say, "We need tax increases." Like they in my house, paying my bills. Now you saying we need this full-time mayor. We passed a budget. It was voted on and went into effect in July. Where's twenty-five thousand dollars going to come from? When you answer that, because you voted for this budget, and there was no increase for no mayor in it, tell us, me, where you going to get your twenty-five thousand dollars from? You just can't just magically do certain things. You have a budget. That's what's supposed to guide you up here by. That's what's supposed to guide you up here by. Where's $25,000? Those of you that voted for it, and I know who you are, and you know who you are, tell us, tell me where you're going to get $25,000 from. I just paid them taxes. That's why you see this little bit of anger in the voice, okay? And I paid taxes on three properties, okay? Tell me where it's going to come, without the city going down, not up, down. Where is this money going to come from? The average citizen is 65 years of age. Anybody going to help the senior citizen out? Pass me your name, talk right now, to help us pay for these taxes. And I'm dead serious about this. I sat there, an ordinance was passed with the mayor sitting where Cole was sitting, and said he would address this issue in two years. Why y'all in the council like this? Come to the meeting like I do, then you will know what's going on. I'm not a part-time visitor to this right here. I'll never forget, God was sitting in Jason's seat. I missed the meeting one night. He said, "Where's your excuse?" I said, "Excuse for what?" He said, "You didn't come to the meeting." That's how much I come to this meeting, because I care about the city. I don't come when there's this issue, or that issue. I'm here all the time, and everybody up here can attest to that. When the mayor didn't have a body here one night to even do anything, who sat in this chair and talked? Mattie Thomas did, okay? I'm not a part-time citizen, I'm full-time. And these are the people we put up here to do this. Now, this ordinance was on the book. So you didn't vote for a full-time mayor, she know it, and most of all, they know it. Tell me where you're going to get the $25,000 from? It's not in here. And like everybody said, half of these projects was done, as any other administrator. Say no, it was done up under another administration. Not up under this, these was already on the books. How I know? I was sitting right there in that chair. I was sitting right there in that chair.
Thank you, Ms. Maddie. Thank you, Ms. Maddie.
You're welcome, and I realize I went over there, but thank you for indulging me.
Thank you. It's already in the budget.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
My name is Carol McCallum. I am not a full-time resident, I'm a part-time resident currently. And my concern at the moment are the streets in Lake City. When I ride around Lake City, I see that they all need to be paid, especially Carver Street, Scott, Moore Street, Deep River. And I want to know what are the plans in order to get this done? Because it's my goal to eventually move back to Lake City. And I want to live in a place that looks very nice. And I see that you all are currently, I think you all are currently taking down some of the houses, you know, the dilapidated, outdated houses. So my concern is just, you know, just to beautify the place and to make it look better. And I just don't know what's going on, and like I said, I'm new currently, and I'll be coming back again. But I just want to know, are there anything in the plans to make this happen? Is it going to happen? Because, for example, like on Moore Street, I've seen some, I guess on the side of the road there, and it's been sitting there probably since I've been here over a week, almost two weeks, for the longest. I don't know what the process is, or whether someone needs to call to say, "Okay, can you pick this up? Can you move this junk, or someone put it there?" Because I see that a lot around here, and I'm not sure what the process is. So I'm learning, and I'm reading also, and I will do my research. So if there's something that I need to do, I will do it. So I just want to know, that's my concern.
Make sure you sign, put your name and your contact information.
Okay.
Well, yeah, that's true, because I'm not sure whether Carver Street is a state street. And if it is, and if it's something that I need to do, to contact the state of South Carolina, I will do that for it to get repaid, because I noticed that at the beginning of Carver and at the end, you have all of these little bumps in the road. It has been requested?
Yes, it has not been completely addressed.
Oh, but it's been?
Now, where your driveway is, uh, 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 there was the Floyd Avenue, there was some work done down there.
Okay.
But it didn't come straight across the street. Because when you're back out of your driveway, you see where that sinkhole was? That dip's there, it's still there.
Okay, okay.
But we, as long as you put your contact info on there so we can keep the meeting moving, we will definitely contact you back.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name's John Wallace Williams. I do not live in Lake City. However, I felt the need to come here tonight to ask the council, along with the mayor, please do not go backwards. You have a full-time mayor, it requires full-time attention, at least eight hours a day. How do I know this? Because I do it in Scranton, and Scranton is probably one-fourth or one-sixth the size of Lake City. There are a lot of issues that your mayor deals with on a daily basis, and it takes more than just four hours a day to do that. So I implore you, please do not go backwards. Continue to move forward. I've heard nothing but great things about this city when I've attended different municipal association seminars. I've been with this mayor, your mayor, at several of these forums. She handles herself magnificently. She even, if I didn't know any better, I would have thought that maybe she'd been a mayor for at least maybe six years, instead of maybe, instead of two years. And when I came on board in January of this year, and I needed some assistance, she did not hesitate to give me assistance, nor did her staff. I could call, I could ask, they helped me out tremendously. Again, I implore you, do not go backwards. Continue to move forward. You're doing great things here in Lake City. Continue to do these things. Thank you.
Any other public comments? I thank everyone for tonight, for your comments tonight. We're going to move forward with our legislative portion. And we have tonight Chief Driggers, Randy Driggers, standing in the place of Mr. William Hall.
First, I present to you ordinance 2024.008 amended. Second and final reading and ordinance for the city of Lake City, South Carolina, for the compensation of benefits of the office of the mayor to the city of Lake City in compensation of benefits of the council members and all matters related to their city.
Need a motion to approve ordinance 2024.008 amended for second and final reading.
Move to approve?
It has been properly moved as second. Any questions or discussion, council?
Yes, on page nine in your agenda packet.
This is conflicting for me. At the very top, which says ordinance first slash first reading, and next was ordinance second reading, then resolution first and final reading. But there's a check in the ordinance first reading, which this is not the first reading. But when you come back to the second page. You see that? That what?
It will be switched at signature.
Okay, but is there a reason this was, was this an error here, or?
No, I have no idea what you're going to come up with, because I left it there.
But it's dated August 28th?
I understand that.
Okay, so, but this is second reading?
Yes.
Okay, just for, just for the record, sure, that's clear.
This should be second and final reading, right?
Yeah. Also, to also support that, I think on the second page in the packet, it states on the bottom, first reading amended September 10, 2024. Second reading and final reading is October 8, 2024. So the date is correct on that part. So whatever happens tonight, yes, that will be changed and signed correctly and dated correctly.
Okay, because it's the wrong date, okay, just for the record, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Any other questions or comments? Before we vote, I just want to say, my question is why? Why the decrease in pay and time? There's so, there's no such thing as a part-time mayor. A mayor is a mayor after 5:00 PM. At 8:00 PM, when they receive a call or a text about a matter, or on a Saturday or Sunday afternoon about a matter, a mayor is always a full-time position. So why? Don't understand. Until you actually walk in my shoes, when I walk through that door, not even just walk through the office door, but when I wake up and see any calls or emails or concerns. In my opinion, you give a demotion or a decrease to someone who has not been put in the work and no accomplishments been made. I have a list of accomplishments for the city of Lake City since I was sworn in. A lot was stated tonight by others attending here tonight, and I appreciate that. Usually, you give an increase to ones who have been doing their duties plus extra that is bringing success to whatever business or organization they are a part of or leading. My works in the past, almost two years as mayor, speaks for me. I'm in the community participating, networking, volunteering, representing, inspiring our young people, supporting our young people across Lake City and the state of South Carolina and the nation. I can understand if I wasn't doing my job, but I am. That increase was not going to increase anyone's water bill or put any type of burden on a hardship on them. So let me ask you, do you think that my decrease is going to lighten any burdens or hardships on anyone? If anything, it may put a hardship or burden on the leader or the CEO of your city, me. No one these days can take care of their family without a decent pay. There are many respected professions that are making more than my current salary. I am a single mother who the only one up here, I believe, have children in the home. And I still manage to be the best at both worlds. I'm visible in our community every day, show my support at most events in the city and out. But like I stated before, God is my sole provider. You always talk about others who live out of town and have positions here. Well, I born here, grew up here, reside and live here, but still get treated no differently. What do you want? A puppet, not me. A punching bag, not me. That I am not and won't ever be. You talk about more job opportunities to come for our citizens, to have better-paying jobs and more. But you sit here and want to decrease the pay for the leader and CEO of your city who is a citizen and native of Lake City. My 11-year-old hasn't asked me a few weeks ago, right after that meeting, "Why do they want to decrease your pay, Mom? When do you, when you do so much for the city? And you are a single mother with children still in school." "Make me understand, Mom." And that's my 11-year-old. "How can you explain or give good enough reason for this?" I just asked the question why. So with that being said, any other comments?
The reason, the reason why I'm doing it is because of, number one, we never had a full-time mayor.
Thank you. Hold on, I'm sorry.
We're not going to have any chaos here.
Let me finish talking.
We understand your frustration, and we are frustrated.
Okay, one second. One second. Please, everyone, please, everyone. We're going to just allow council to speak, and then we're going to move forward. No, we're not answering any questions.
In my opinion, I say let's not go back. I see the need for the full-time mayor being visible during the day. I've been here a while, haven't been here longer than Mrs. Crosby. But I've been here a while. I see the growth, I see the need. So my vote is yes, to continue what we have. You know, if the increase mean that much, let it be. But then let move on, let move forward. I don't think, I, I, I'm not looking back. I'm not going to look back, because this is my life. The fewer years I got here, I want to see Lake City move forward and continue to grow. So we need to work together and let it grow. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments, council?
It's like to say, when things are going good, you don't change things. It's that simple.
Thank you.
The best of Les Eves, right? Who said that last council member, right?
If, if that's all, all in favor?
And for the good of the group, the motion is, the motion that you were voting on is for the decrease. Just so everyone's clear on what the vote is, for the decrease as amended at last meeting.
Not the part-time?
No, the part-time, yeah, whether it's part-time and a decrease.
Okay, okay.
This, it says?
The motion is on the floor.
Yeah, it's on the floor for the ordinance. If the, if, just for everyone to understand, if this is approved tonight, mayor pay decreases and council member pay remains the same. Impact if denied, mayor and council member pay remains the same for both. So.
No, that was ambiguous, that was thrown in there arbitrarily.
Let them know what was on the table and what's going on now.
Yeah, because we're supposed to go off what the minute said, last council, what we came up with, not what she put in there. Because if that's the case, that, that's not right.
In this part about impact, that she just mentioned, impact denied. It gave the summary and background, impact denied, then impact if approved. Now, the impact denied, I don't feel it's necessary to have, to have been gone in this. Because that, that.
That was just my comment.
But this is on, in this, right in the ordinance here. But now, that should not have been there, that should have been deleted.
And why that was in the ordinance?
Why, yeah, that, that was, to me, this was done to confuse.
It's not confusing.
It's contradictory, it's very contradictory.
Well, it looks like, like y'all putting stuff in there like we're not reading.
No, no one's putting anything in there. That's, that's. But, but no one, I'm, I'm not going to go back and forth. Thank you, chief, we're about to vote.
The motion is on the floor, let's go ahead and do the vote, get it over.
This is on the ordinance, no one is input, putting anything to confuse anybody.
It's sitting, it's sitting right here.
That is not me, I would never be that way.
Well, whoever did, whoever did the typing is there.
The information is right, the information is right there.
It's very ambiguous.
At any, any agenda, you can see that it gives reason if, for people to understand, if a, if an ordinance is passed, what will happen? Or if an ordinance is not passed, what will happen? This is not the first time this is in here. So now I ask for a vote, all in favor for this ordinance of 2024.008. Show of hands, all in favor. Any oppose? Ordinance passed.
Next ordinance, I present to y'all's ordinance 2024.009, second and final reading and ordinance of the city of Lake City, South Carolina, authorizing the city of Lake City Police Department to enter to a law enforcement assistance and support agreement with the King Street Police Department and other matters related there to you.
Need a motion to approve ordinance 2024.009 for second and final reading?
Motion to approve.
It has been properly moved as second. Any questions, council?
Chief, is that just a mutual?
Just a mutual, lady group.
We did this on last month, too, didn't we?
Yeah, this is second and final reading.
Okay, oh, yeah.
Second, thank you. Any other questions, council? If none, all in favor, show of hands.
All right, next, I present to y'all Resolution 2024.044, final reading, a resolution for the city of Lake City, South Carolina, for approval of council committing to provide a local cash-in kind match of at least $2,500, which equals the minimum 10% match, local match required by- local match required by the Municipal Association of South Carolina to support the city of Lake City application for a $25,000 hometown economic development grant and all other matters related to. I will say that that grant is supposed to be for wayfinding signage.
For what?
Wayfinding signage.
Can you explain that more to them?
So wayfinding signage involves a lot of concepts, but the whole concept includes such things as gateway signs, but also signs for local party, parking, traffic in different areas. So you have signage for downtown or for the whole city.
Throughout the city. I need a motion to approve Resolution 2024.044 for final reading.
Motion to approve.
It has been properly moved and second. Any other questions, counsel? If none, all in favor, show of hands.
All right, next I present you Resolution 2024.045. The city of Lake City is seeking approval to accept grant funds from the Highway Safety Grant Program for the Lake City Police Department in the amount of $81,141 and other matters related thereto.
Need a motion to approve Resolution 2024.04, excuse me, .045 for final reading.
Motion to approve.
It has been properly moved and second. Any questions?
Randy, can you explain to the, um, I was about to say congregation, to the audience, um, what this entails?
So basically, these funds is used for traffic enforcement. Would you have Coach, Chief Miles here, if he'd like to go into more detail? But basically, it's for traffic enforcement, if I'm correct.
So like with signage, or with signage, signage out, doing traffic signs? Okay.
And exactly what does it entail? You said all the officers on the road.
The way budgetary is written on this one is, is meant to fund one additional officer. The salary, fringe benefits includes dental, vision, court liability insurance. It also has a component for training. It's got a component for a few different pieces of equipment, like radar and a lot of other. Thank you. That is just of however, we are reaching out to Jagger.
Chief, Mike?
We're reaching out to the, uh, to Jagger, Jagger Grant with the hopes of having that, the salary portion of that transferred over so we can use it in overtime budget to have our community response team, essentially our traffic team, that will go towards overtime functions that they work. Checkpoints, additional patrols in certain areas of the city where, you know, traffic accidents seems to be more prevalent or more speeding tickets here versus there. It just allows them to work overtime and helps cover the budget on that overtime. Because as you all know, the overall overtime budget for the entire city, as far as the police department goes, is fairly small. So that, that would help support that. That's our hope, but right now, it is just for one additional officer per se.
Any other questions on this resolution? If none, all in favor, show of hands. Thank you, Chief.
All right, so we move on to the city administrative reports. As you have in front of you, the general fund, year-to-date actual is $1,087.170. Water fund, year-to-date actual, 16, 581 in revenue. Sewer fund, year-to-date actual, sewer fund revenue, 928, 332. Stormwater, year-to-date actual, 36, 317. And our reserve fund at the bottom, year-to-date actual, 92, 175. I also present you approval of monthly bills, um, 1 through 4.
Need a motion to approve bills, items 1 through 4 for October.
My number's different.
It's, it's 4. 1, 2, 3, 4, it should have been instead of 4, 8. It's just 4. Go to the second page. So motion to approve bills, items 1 through 4 for October 8, 2024.
Move to approve.
It has been properly moved and second. Any questions, counsel?
Is this totally inclusive of all the monthly bills?
This is what is presented to council, which would be expenditures that are required for your amount to be approved.
Any other questions, counsel? If none, all in favor, show of hands. Any opposed?
Now, I guess we have Chief Miles do his report.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council. Some of the numbers for the month of September, September 2024. Overall total cost of services, 1,241 service calls, with the majority of those service calls, um, being 279 traffic stops, 364 property checks. And in addition to that, we did have, we responded to 34 calls for domestic violence, as stated earlier by Ms. Harriet, the domestic violence won't be in October. So we're gonna keep a close eye on those as well. We had 53 follow-ups, 21 warrant services, 10 assaults, and the list goes on and on. I think you have a copy of this. I can go into detail if you've got any questions. But out of that 279 traffic stops, there was 97 actual monetary traffic citations issued. So nearly 300 vehicle stops and only 97 tickets issued. And again, that goes to show that officers, we're not here to hammer people with traffic tickets. It's more about education than it is, you know, just hammering people with, with traffic tickets, 'cause everybody's wallet's hurting these days. And the way those traffic tickets are broken down is 23 vehicle license violations, four simpleizations of marijuana, 17 speeding tickets, 10 driver's license violations, 10 driving under suspensions and 3 DUIs for the month of September. We, uh, we each had 45 arrest warrants issued and served 33 arrest warrants with 142 incident reports completed. We currently have three class one officers in the Criminal Justice Academy. They started Monday. They are scheduled to graduate, I believe it's December 6th is their projected graduation date. We're reviewing two certified officers' applications for hire. We're starting interviews next week. We'll be interviewing, I'm sorry, this week, tomorrow, actually. We'll be interviewing five individuals for the youth intervention coordinator. Those interviews will start tomorrow at 12:30 and they'll follow into the next day as well as the next week.
Is that youth intervention, is that through the police department or that through the city?
It is now back under the, it will be supervised by the police department now. So that, that individual will be asked to be, they'll go through the process for a class three advanced officer.
Officer McKnight, is that the one?
Investigate McKnight. She's assigned to the investigation.
Okay.
She's investigated. Our current open positions, we have one class three advanced position that's open. That's in the TRU, this one walking the front lobby up there. The individual that sits up there, they are a class three advanced police officer as well. We have two patrol positions open. And out of the, those two certified officers that we're looking at, if we hire those, that means we'll still have two positions that's open. And we're looking at hiring a patrol lieutenant that's, uh, tentative start date is November 1 for him. And that will complete out our command staff for the Lake City Police Department will leave us with only two open positions within the entire department. We haven't been able to say that in almost, I think we're knocking on the door of eight years now.
That's great.
I know within the last five years, we have not been able to say that.
That's great.
But I look back at my records and it's been nearly eight years at least since we've been this far. Our total number of positions in the police department, as I was asked earlier, we have 40 total positions, and that's including mine. And the way it's broken down, we have essentially 21 officers on patrol, assigned to the patrol division, and they're supervised by, each shift is supervised by a patrol sergeant. And then those sergeants, as well as the patrol officers if need be, are supervised by a patrol lieutenant. Each shift has a TRU that's assigned to the shift. They can take their walk-in complaints up here 24/7. When you call the police department number now, the 5411 number, it goes directly into the police department. You no longer get a recording. You get a live person on the end of the phone if you dial a non-emergency number.
What's that non-emergency number?
843-374-5411. It's just a police department number. Where before, before these hurricanes started coming in and stuff like that, it was going to a recorder. And you had to choose what extension. You know, some people just don't wanna call 911, but they truly have an emergency on the line. So they're, they'll be trained to handle that, and they are trained to handle that promptly. And we are looking at our newest addition of the police department. He actually completed his training Thursday, last Thursday. And that's, uh, we've, we're gonna add a K-9 officer to the fleet. He will be assigned to the community response team. There are four officers on that team. They're also supervised by a sergeant. However, they report directly to myself and Major Gray. On that team is a, we have got a year and a half German Shepherd. That is, he's trained in tracking, as well as tracking, trailing and detection. And as he starts at the next council meeting, we're doing the deduction on him. But it's just a heads up on that.
You bring him to the meeting?
We can bring him. We, we can bring him. He is, uh, he's not an apprehension dog. He's not a bite dog. But at the end of the day, he is a K-9. If he's overstimulated, if he's haunted or anything like that, there's a possibility you're gonna get bit.
How much did it cost?
It didn't cost the city a dime.
Really?
Nope, not a dime. The city has paid absolutely zero for this dog. This dog was funded by the asset forfeiture fund. What that is, is when we do search warrants on these drug locations, when we do traffic stops and seize currency, once it goes through the court system, we're then allotted 75% of that money. That's what paid for that dog. Keep calling him the dog. I've been told not to.
What's his name?
His name is Ford, F-O-R-D.
Officer Ford.
The cost of this K-9 was $19,500. Yeah, he is, he's, he's one of the best officers in a while. And he, they're actually in Atlanta now, where the trainer is completing a K-9 paramedic course. And, um, once he completes that K-9 paramedic course, they'll come back and they'll be fully operational. But that's, they're also completing a level four certification, which is, that's huge, a level four certification. You know, and we'll go into detail a little bit more on that at the next council meeting. But I just wanted to give you guys a heads up that that was coming. And I think it's a good thing. The department's on board with it. If they ask for it, it's been asked for for a while. We, we hope to see great things with it. And, and look, this is not only for suspects. He has the ability to track people with all kinds, people with dementia. He can do, I mean, it's not just somebody that's running from the police. He can track a missing child.
Missing person, yeah.
Any, any scenario, he can track. And, and we'll get into that more as well, too.
He's beautiful.
But I, I wanna, I really wanna make the point clear that he is not a apprehension.
Right.
He is not trained to, to run and attack. He doesn't go up and bite a suspect. That's not, that's not his purpose. His purpose is solely narcotics detection, tracking and trailing. Whether that be a suspect in flight or whether it be an all-timer patient or whether it be a missing child. That's, that's the purpose of it. We didn't, we didn't venture into this with the hopes of getting a dog and chasing people down and biting them. That's, that's, that's not what, what we're, we're here to do.
Right.
That's all I have.
Thank you, Chief. Appreciate it. That's all you have, Chief? Chief Drakers? Sorry.
Let me ask you, um, a question. You may or may not have answered. How many vehicles do we have in the city's fleet?
How many vehicles? You want 12 new ones?
That's what the police department, okay, I'm saying the city total.
Oh, it's a whole.
12 in the police department, okay.
That's 12 new ones. We're gonna have to give you that information. I don't have it in hand.
Okay, you don't have it in your hand.
Thanks for the reports. We do not have executive session for this evening. Next and final thing we have for on our agenda is the council member reports and comments and mayor's report to end the meeting tonight. We will start with Councilman Brown.
Good evening, everyone, and thanks for coming out. Um, just wanted to, um, give you guys a heads up that it was announced at my church service by Ms. Burke Scott, who works, um, at the March Election Committee. Excuse me, at March. She wanted everyone to know that the voters registration deadline has been.
Has been extended.
Has been extended to, um, October the 14th. Um, and if you or anyone that you know needs, um, information on getting registered to vote, you can go to the office that's on Third Loop Road and they can help you, um, with that so that you can have your voters registration card by election date, which is November the 5th. And, um, I would like to also say again about the breast cancer awareness month. And I just encourage, um, men and women to do, uh, monthly breast exams on themselves. Um, and ladies, please, also get your mammograms, um, yearly. And that is it. Um, I hope that everyone stays vigilant and be safe. Have a good night.
Good evening. Well, thank you, everyone, for coming out. And Carolyn, um, really appreciate your comments and your concerns, and hopefully they can and will be addressed in a timely fashion. And also, um, we, there were some home, you know how many homes were knocked down? Dilapidated homes?
12.
12, okay, um, can I get the addresses of those homes, of missed addresses? Yeah. And, um, the, the retention ponds. Now, when you wrote it in the minutes, uh, it didn't, it didn't say, um, I forgot what the verbiage was in there, but I was specific about which retention ponds. The one by CVS and the one by Dollar General. Those ponds are, are overgrown, well overgrown. That was addressed last month.
I wanna say, I want, I do want, excuse me, I do wanna say that letters already have been sent out once again to Dollar General and CVS to make sure that they, um, they are accountable for, um, cleaning up those retention ponds. Am I correct?
Yes.
Please do, thank you. And, um, these overgrown lots, right there on, um, by Coltrane, there's a house next to him. I think it belongs to the McGill's. And I did speak with Ms. McGill, and I think it's her sister who is in a nursing home. Sister's son, who lives in New Jersey, but the mother's in a nursing home. And I'll see if I can get that information to you so you can make contact with them. And, oh, there's some lots on Scott Street. I'm sorry. There's, you know, a lot of blight over there. Several, um, dilapidated homes down Floyd Avenue, Lincoln Avenue, Wilson Streets. Um, everything on the southwest side of Lake City, we really need more attention brought to cleaning up this city. And I would like to see what teeth put into cleaning it up. I don't, there's a private conversation there. Okay, and, um, that's all I think I have right now. And again, um, thank you for your, um, comments, your concerns. And please come back as often as you can to the council meetings. We'd love to, um, grace your countenance. Have a good night. Thank you.
Can we go back over there? Let's try to, like Ms. Murphy say with the lights. Nothing still haven't been done over there by the lights over there. So what I do tomorrow, Chief, I just come by and me and you ride up there and look at it and get that straight over there at Secretary Avenue, 'cause I've been on that for the, since I got on council.
Yeah, I wanna do a ride along with someone, too. Who ride along with? The codesenforcer? The code enforcer? I'll make contact so I can go ride along, and we bring the television station with us. Okay, bring the camera.
Thank you all for coming out. Also, to all the presenters tonight, thank you for that information. Hopefully next month, this courthouse will be as packed as it is tonight. I also want to say to Chief Miles, thank you for getting on that call that I asked you about, what, that was last week, I believe? Kennedy Park has some attempts, some break-in attempts. I contacted Chief Miles, he got his guys on there. They were riding around, and they were vigilant, so I did see them, so I do appreciate that. I actually think we had another one today. I'm not sure, I don't have all the information on that. But when I do get it, I will reach out to you. But thank you to you and your team.
Just want to say thanks to everyone that came out this evening and voiced your concern. And I want you to know that my concern is the city of Lake City at best interest. My concern about the people, my concern is the need that we have here, not personal or anything of that, being about the money or whatever, but that's my belief. And I will always stand for what I believe in, and that's my vote. And hopefully, y'all come back next week, next month. And don't forget to vote, like Ms. Cooper, Councilmember Cooper said, this election is very important, so you not registered to vote, make sure you do it immediately. And tell somebody else about it. Bring someone with you. Encourage them to be a voice for our city. Thank you.
Mr. Swolimina? Nothing to report.
Thank you, council members. First, I want to start off with announcements of events. October is a month filled with a lot of events happening in the city of Lake City. Please go to our website and Facebook page to learn about them, Breast Cancer Awareness. Thank you, Ms. Daniels, for presenting that tonight. Also, Domestic Violence Awareness Month, thank you, Ms. Rose, for presenting that tonight as well. Thanks all the presenters for presenting tonight of your information. Please mark your calendars for a community forum on November eighteenth. We do have flyers at the continuum at six P.M. I will be joining County Councilman Springs, House Representative Kirby, Senator Sab, and Sheriff T.J. Joy, and Chief Miles will be there as well, presenting updates from the city, county, and state for you all. Come in, listen to our updates, and also if you have questions, welcome those as well. Most of everyone should have received a card in the mail, probably yesterday or before or today, from SCDOT about a drop-in meeting on October seventeenth. If you got this card, please go on there. It gives you a lot of information to tell you about this project, which is the Highway Fifty-two, improvements to Highway Fifty-two corridor. We walked this corridor last year, the entire corridor, from O'Reilly's to the Lake City PH Church last year. This year, we met again and talked about the findings of the assessment. Now, they just need your input. This project will make Highway Fifty-two corridor more safer for motorists and pedestrians. So there will be some great information to know about the changes that we're going to see for our Highway Fifty-two corridor that has been long overdue to happening. So I'm very, very grateful to SCDOT for making this happen. Of course, we know about the past with Hurricane Helene. We call it the past, but truly, there's people that's still affected by this. So I, I think the businesses, the city of Lake City, the organizations, the churches, everyone who's been pitching in to make sure places like Asheville get those type of items because it could happen easily us. And we never know when. And also, with Hurricane Milton coming through now, you know, we, we never know how these storms are going to turn. So let's keep Florida, everyone, in prayer about Hurricane Milton and everything else. Just like, just want to reiterate on the voting. October fourteenth is the extension for the voters' registration because of Hurricane Helene came through. October twenty-first will begin early voting. Please go out and vote. Your vote matters. Your vote counts. Your vote makes a difference. So please go out and vote for this next, this upcoming election. I would like to thank everyone who came out to speak tonight, and all the viewers on Facebook, and I'm so honored and grateful for the support that came out tonight to speak truth. I really appreciate you all, and I can't express my gratitude enough. You came in numbers and delivered beautifully, and I'm, I'm forever grateful. This is unity, Ms. Paula. This is truly unity. This is support for what's right. This is understanding when a true leader is doing all God, God requires her to do in her position for everyone, everyone. And to conclude my report tonight, to the citizens of Lake City and council members, to the ones that support me and to the ones that don't, I don't make promises often, but I, but this promise I will make. You just witnessed only one of the experiences of me, a woman in leadership going through the fire. Only one, because I go through many. The enemy always bothering the one it doesn't have a hold on to. But even though I went through it, I promise you, I won't smell like smoke, and I won't have a burn spot on my body. Because I'm still who I am for the city of Lake City. I am still going to advocate and represent the same way and now even before, better than I had before when I was elected mayor. And the credit goes to nobody but God. No matter what man thinks they have done to me, no worries. Because when you operate in your passion, your purpose and destiny, no man can shut down what God has ordained. I promise you, the second half of my what you think may be only a one-term mayor will be the best half, and then the best is still yet to come. I'm not bitter at, about this situation at all. This situation has only made me better because I still have a city to run, and that I'm going to do, just that. I'm going to serve to the best of my ability, not to what man thinks and tries to make me do, and then turns their back on me when I don't do as Simon says, do. Or I can plug some other names in there. But I won't. I respect every mayor of Lake City that has come before me and paved the way, but I'm here to do the same and even more for my successors. It's not about me. It's about their success after my one-plus terms with an S. And then again, that's all in God's hands. Because my daily prayer is, God have your way. I just hope you believe what happens is all in his plan, and this tonight, what happened is in his plan. Jeremiah twenty-nine eleven says, "For the plans I have for you declares the Lord, plans to prosper you and not to harm you, plans to give you hope and a future." God's words, not mine. So my future that is promised by God is still a prosper one, prosperous one, no matter what. So your plot won't ever overcome God's plan. A bishop just recently told me, a few weeks before the last council meeting, mayor, they have in the meeting, before the meeting, God was trying to tell me something. Last but not least, I may have a decrease in pay in time, but I still have a praise, and I, and I will still work every day with a mighty purpose for Lake City as the first African-American female mayor of Lake City. Thank you. And can I get a motion to adjourn?
So move. (applause).